I'm going to open the meeting to the public. Yes, Cal?
I was asked to provide a letter for the support of the county legislator for the comprehensive plan and its local waterfront that sent you a, uh, a copy of the letter and I delivered one to Susan tonight, so you have the hard copy of it.
Thank you.
Yep, uh, as you probably all heard by now, Canada's saying the border will be allowed in if you're fully vaccinated on August ninth, so I imagine we'll come out and reciprocate with that at the same time, so I imagine we're looking forward to two-way traffic. Hopefully, what happened today with the county health department report, suddenly over the weekend there were ten cases, we've been getting a lot of zeros, uh, eight of the cases were unvaccinated, two of them were vaccinated people, so hopefully we're not gonna have that turnaround. Uh, something I've been meaning to mention for the last couple of years and I've come into the meeting tonight or reminded me of it, coming down Maple Street in this direction you get to Chapman, that stop sign is very, very difficult to see with the trees and the leaves on it. I noticed it last week up in Flatsburg or North Catherine, they've got one that they've cut out like this so that people can see it.
We moved that once already.
But it's still, you know, people who honestly know it's there, it's no problem.
Yeah.
But somebody who doesn't know it's there, which isn't thinking is gonna go through there one time.
And that's going north on Maple?
Yes. Uh, an alternative might be to put a stop sign on both sides of the street so that you can see it from the other side and maybe one of those stop sign ahead signs as you're approaching it. So you have the warning stop sign ahead and the sign on the other side because sooner or later, you know, you know somebody's gonna go through there. I'm sure it's probably happened already except there hasn't been a serious incident.
And we can stencil that onto the road.
Yeah, well, stenciling on the road, but, you know, people aren't looking at the road there.
Yeah.
Looking out there. Uh, you may have seen in the paper, it was last week, that the sales tax revenue was up, uh, from what we projected, at the end of June we projected for the county, for the town and villages share, this isn't what the county's getting, projected five point seven million, the actual is eight point six million, so it's about fifty percent higher than what they projected, so that's very, very good.
Especially with, um...
Except we're the ones generating the, generating the sales tax money when we're spending the money.
The state.
And as far as cumulative, we're twenty-two percent over last year, they always project low just to be safe, so our actual last year at the end of June was seven million and again this time it's eight point six, so we're, based on what was later last year, we're twenty-two percent ahead of last year, so that's, that's a good sign in terms of...
That's good news.
Yeah, very good news.
And especially the fifty percent over the projection because, you know...
People are spending local, that's good.
Yeah, and hopefully on August ninth, uh, we'll get an influx. I kind of agree with, uh, what Mr. Valotti said over the weekend that it's gonna come too late as far as the voters go, I don't, I can't foresee people coming in August putting in their vote and usually by Labor Day they're starting to...
Hold them up, yeah.
Starting to, so I don't know if it's gonna help too much with the voters, but it's such a crime, you drive through town, a village and you see all those boats sitting up there.
At least they'll be able to come down and check on their boats, they have family to check on it over the weekend.
Yeah, I know, it's gonna be driving them crazy, those are expensive boats sitting there and giving a couple a look at them.
A lot of them will come down, spend weekends even on their boats.
Yeah, right, yeah, hopefully, hopefully that August ninth will happen.
What they're all says is they go down here and just stay over the weekend, when they go back up there they still have to take another test, like it's seventy-two hours to take a test up there.
Not now, the August ninth will be, if you're fully vaccinated, if you can show you're vaccinated, you can cross.
No, I'm speaking about the Canadians.
When they've gotta go back, they'll have to take another test within seventy-two hours.
Yes, I just talked to my buddy who camps next to me on Saturday, and he said if he comes down...
This is today, this is reported today, this is today's news.
There's nothing in the paper or anything?
It's today's news, it had, it had in the paper, it came out at noon time, CBC reported around noon time, so it's, it's today's news, so, you know, so it'll be in tomorrow's paper.
Hopefully it'll be in tomorrow's paper.
Yeah.
Oh, that's great, great news.
Good news for all of us.
No, let's hope it happens.
Right.
Our numbers start shooting up, take the bullet on it, who knows?
Now, are they, they opening the border all through the United States or just Quebec?
No, this is Canadian, Canadian, yeah.
Canadian, Canada border, all throughout.
They'll allow fully vaccinated to show your card, so if you're not vaccinated, you can't go up that way.
Right.
So I imagine we will do the same thing in this direction, you'll have to show your card, but, you know, I can't imagine why it wasn't set up, but we would've responded at the same time, but, you know, I would say within the next day or so we'll, we'll have that response from our government saying...
Same thing.
Yeah, but we'd probably be more willing to let them in if they're vaccinated, then maybe they're willing to let us, they're ready to walk.
Maybe they'll finally be able to pick up that clock.
Yeah.
That thing's been sitting up there for, for forever.
It's out of date now.
No storage fees.
Oh, God, storage fees, I hope not. Anybody else?
Thank you, Cal.
Thank you. Colin? The minutes of the previous meeting, any comments or questions on the minutes of the previous meeting?
Make a motion, we accept them as printed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any questions on the bills?
Yes, I have one. Um, I'd like to take and exclude the Stafford bill for four hundred and thirty-five dollars for review, and I'm gonna have an executive session on, it's approved.
What page is that?
Page six.
Halfway down the first page.
For four hundred and thirty-five dollars. I'd like to make a motion that all the bills be paid except that one for review.
One second.
Is this the first page?
No, sixth page.
Sixth page, six.
Right after the retirements for all of us.
For the amount of four hundred and thirty-five dollars.
And there was a motion made in a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Hello.
None.
Okay, I'd like to thank everybody that returned letters for their support for the comprehensive plan, we've got a lot of letters in so far, uh, let's see, we've got a motion to amend previously adopted minutes.
So move.
One second.
Susan, what were we remanding again?
Um, the minutes were approved under, um, executive session, it says trustee Arno made a motion to exit executive session at seven forty-seven PM, seconded by trustee Arno, when I looked back in my notes, the second was trustee Pelkey.
Okay, yeah, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution twenty, twenty-one dash twenty, resolution of the village of Rousas Point Board authorizing the sub bill of application for funding to the New York State Department of State's local waterfront revitalization program and smart growth comprehensive planning grant program for planning and development grant acknowledging that there are sufficient match funds and authorizing them there to sign this sub bill, require documentation for the application and grant agreement doc, documents if awarded, and this is just to submit the grant, see if we get it.
For the water plant?
No, this is for the comprehensive plan.
So, do we have money for that? It said, you know, twenty-five percent funded.
No, actually that wasn't ever, it's, uh, ten to fifteen percent depending on what grant we get, and this would be in next year's budget, not this year's budget.
It'd be nice if we had a dollar amount.
Uh, it would be between eight and twelve thousand dollars.
That would be our share?
Yes. The grant request is for eighty thousand.
I talked to the treasurer Friday about this, he had no, no clue what this was about.
Well, he knows we're working on the comprehensive plan, um, I don't, yeah, I don't think he has seen the grant yet, we've just been, we haven't actually submitted it, um...
We have, I think we have, what, ten thousand dollars in, in the budget?
Yeah, for this year, and that's for the...
Is that what we have?
Yes, for the...
And we already use a portion of that for Barkum and Judas, correct?
Yes, they are the contractor for the, um, survey and they're writing the grants, that's what that is going towards.
So this isn't gonna put us over that ten thousand dollars?
This, this is gonna be in next year, next year's budget.
It'd be nice if we had like a dollar amount, a rough...
Well, we have a dollar amount by budget, so...
It's eight to twelve thousand for next year, for the eighty thousand dollar grant we're submitting for.
Can we, can we table this and let our son look at this first? We have to submit it by, is it tomorrow?
We can submit it without the resolution attached, we can do the, the resolution when our son's here.
Would that weaken the submission?
Uh, I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, it's just, it's nice to have a number of, of, a number that, that we're comfortable with, I mean, you know, it's like signing a check with no amount in it, we need to know.
That's...
We don't know how our budget's gonna be, I mean, if our budget is like our budget this year, we're in tough shape, I mean, it's tight.
We could probably find, it's only gonna be eight to twelve out of an eighty thousand dollar grant we'd be getting, and the amount of stuff we'd gain from this is immense, 'cause we could give grants for apartment businesses downtown, fixing the buildings up and so on, for eight to twelve thousand, we could get so much out of this that that would just be pennies by comparison with what they, with what, with what doors open up.
I agree, but I mean, if it's not gonna hurt to, you can submit the grant without the resolution, I'd just like to run it by our son.
Yeah, 'cause we can table until our son comes back.
I feel better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Allow it?
Okay. So that brings up resolution twenty, twenty-one dash twenty-one, where as the board of trustees of the village of Rousas Point in New York wishes to express their gratitude to the eighteen years of service to the village provided by historian Donna Racine, therefore it be resolved, the board of trustees does hereby designate the collection of historic documents and artifacts currently housed in the historian office as the Donna Racine Rousas Point History Collection.
Now, I talked to Brandon about this, I told him that we were gonna make a resolution for his mother to have a plaque on the door and stuff like that, and he said that's very nice of his to do that, but he said, what about all, he said, I don't see nothing in here for any of the other historians that were in the village, like John Ross, Peg Barkum, uh, Don L'Boile, you know, so he was, he said it's nice that the village is doing this, but, you know, what about the recognition of the other people? So I, I don't know what you wanna do, I mean, you know, if you wanna... Would it be better to put a dedication plaque up there and put all their names on it, in the years that they served?
Kind of like we got the plaques for the different layers?
Right.
I think that would actually be, be better because then everybody will...
Then everybody gets credited for the time that they put in.
Right.
And even right now, as Brandon Racine is stepping up and doing what he's doing, he should be credited for his year of service that he's put in, I mean, he's, he's helping us out.
Oh, yeah, he's helping us out quite a bit, I mean, I'm, he, I, I called him last week and told him I couldn't be there Tuesday or Thursday, he said, no problem, he said, I'll cover it, so...
I saw, I spoke to him last Thursday.
Yeah.
Ended up talking for like three hours.
Yeah.
So can we, wanna, just table that, put it in form of a motion?
Put it in form of a motion to do a dedication plaque with all of the historians with their years of service?
Would that have to be a resolution or could we do that as just...
Yeah, it would have to rewrite the resolution.
Sort of have to rewrite the resolution.
And someone would have to give me names for who those people are and when they served, I don't know.
Well, we can, I'll have to research upstairs on how long Donna, or Donna L'Boile did and Peg Barkum and John Ross, Brandon and I can research that, probably tomorrow, whatever will start.
Okay, then, table this also and we will update it.
Table for update.
Yeah, tell them that.
Okay. Update drug and alcohol policy to include marijuana, and that is all that is on here is we added marijuana to the list of, uh, like alcohol and other prohibited drugs. We have to do this now because they've legalized marijuana, so we have to explicitly list it in there. Currently, like last, uh, driver's licenses are still regulated under federal law, federal law hasn't approved anything like that, so we still have to list it specifically so it can fit with federal law.
What about that hemp stuff or whatever you can buy on the drugstore?
Yeah, that's, that's marijuana.
No, that, that's not, that's not, they're talking about marijuana, they're not talking about CBD.
CBD oil, yeah, that's...
It doesn't, it, that's not...
Over the counter.
Yeah, I think there's no H T C.
Yeah, I don't think there's any, there's no drug high.
Oh, yeah.
So this is, this is for all village employees because right now the village employees that have CDLs is...
Under that.
Under that law, that, the federal law. So is this for all village employees now?
There's difference in, in, if you read through the policy, it'll say all and then it'll say safety sensitive employees, um, but because it is legal in New York, Bonnie Black with, um, our EAP sent around an email that we should update our drug and alcohol policy because the drugs generally refer to illicit drugs and it's no longer an illicit drug, even though it's a drug, it's more, um, akin to alcohol, and it has actually the same regulation right now as alcohol in the DOT regulation, although they are revisiting this, so this might have to be updated with the four hours, you can't have alcohol or marijuana within four hours of reporting for work, so basically it's putting marijuana in where the, uh, the alcohol regs are.
So marijuana is in your system for thirty days?
Yeah, um, it can be tested by blood for thirty days, uh, and it's gonna cause a problem with how do you...
By hair, too.
From hair you can get, you can test for up to a year or so.
Right.
Saliva will narrow the window down to a couple days, and it's something that they're looking at as to whether, if there is an accident, will they test for, um, marijuana in the saliva, and this is gonna be evolving, so if DOT or if I hear back from Bonnie Black that there are any updates, this might come back in a month or two and get updated again.
They've really opened a can of worms by legalizing this.
No, they did, so we have to deal with it.
'Cause we could have a case where someone had an accident, they smoked marijuana sometime in the past month and test positive and cause all sorts of issues, even if they weren't under the influence at the time of the accident.
The CDL, you...
Oh, yeah, CDL.
Just thirty days?
Yeah.
I put that in a form of a motion to update the drug and alcohol policy including the marijuana.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Friends of the state request to post a no alcohol sign at the park entrance, apparently there was a problem last week, so now they wanna sign.
Yeah, I can see that.
Yeah.
We had some signs down here that was no alcohol on the premises, okay, the little blue and white ones?
Yeah.
I looked for them today and I didn't see them.
Yeah, we should have some for the ball fielding stuff, too.
I'm kinda surprised that, that wasn't just common knowledge.
Yeah, 'cause there's no smoking, no smoking on the property, no alcohol.
No chewing?
No chewing.
Can't assume anymore.
No.
Probably should get a couple over me.
Put them in a few different places around the park?
Yeah.
Do we have, oh, Adam's not here, do you think we still have them installed or...
No, um, I asked them to look today, um, but you're talking maybe, maybe four signs are like twenty-five bucks a piece, so they're not expensive.
That's not, that's not bad.
No.
We've got signage, things somewhere.
It would keep us, yeah, we have a signage count, so it would keep us out of these people off our doing, and people can't say they didn't melt.
Yeah.
And that's what most of them are saying, that they're getting melt because they're from signage.
Right. Yeah, that's so they think they can get away with it.
Can I get a motion in a second and then we can talk with either parks or public works about it?
Johnny Bernard gives the orders of signs.
I make a motion that we put no alcohol signs at the rec center?
Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Trustee Arno?
Uh, just wanted to ask Mr. Cooper about, uh, how's Chapman Street doing? I have attempted to call David out of camp three times a week, I even, I even come down here on Sunday and tried to on Sunday, figured he might be home, I have not heard anything from him, no response whatsoever, I've done the best I can, but, uh, this is, this is as far as I can get, and I'm, I'm pretty, I'm thoroughly disgusted because he said all of, all the claims had to be in the, by the fifteenth of the month, and I figured by, uh, you know, today's the nineteenth, I, I, but I want, the reason I called him earlier is I spoke to yourself about it, because of that burnt tree over there, and I never could get a hold of him, I still haven't reached him.
Have you heard anything?
I think that Tom has, I've sent him a letter also.
I sent him a letter as well, I have not heard anything back from him as, as well. Um, you know, because I, I don't go by that property, John, what's the status of the property? What's going on there right now?
It's still all fenced in, some of the cars have been removed, there's one vehicle there and it's legal to have one unregistered vehicle on a property, there's a bunch of what I call junk, but obviously it's not junk, I was, I was told by him that it's a, it's part of the claim for the insurance, so we didn't dare move anything, but it's all inside the fence at any rate, and that's exactly where we're at, like you've tried to contact him, I've tried to contact him, I, I'm doing the best I can with that.
Was that June fourteen, did you send that last time?
See, that's what it was, yeah.
Was that June fourteen?
Yeah.
Have we heard anything from the insurance company?
No.
No.
I mean, I haven't, I shouldn't say junk.
No, nothing.
I don't know, um, I can certainly follow up with him and see what's going on, I think it's getting to a point, though, whether, you know, we have, you know, village engineer looking at the property and said, hey, this is, again, falling the category of a dangerous building, um, if it's, something that's dangerous, I, I have not seen to have... It is. But, you know, they need to take some kind of steps, I mean, if it's secured, it's fenced, that's one thing, but you'd like to see a little, obviously, more progress than that. Well, yeah, it's been, well...
Tom, could you, could you post him a, post his insurance company a letter and send a copy to him and, and anybody else, it might be, uh, and, and send a copy to this guy that's supposed to be the maintenance superintendent or whoever you wanna claim it?
If I don't have his...
You know what I'd like to do, if you send those letters, could you send him, uh, return receipt requested?
Sure.
I mean, what the heck?
Yeah, we'll do it.
Is that everything, trustee Arno?
Uh, no, I've got an executive session on the investigation.
Second.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's all I have for now.
Okay, trustee Bernard?
Um, well, I was gonna ask Mr. Cooper the same question, but, um, seeing as I wasn't here last meeting, I would just like to thank all of the Fourth of July committee for everything that, um, that they did for a successful event, thank you very much, and the only other thing I have is I would like to request an executive session to discuss an administrative personnel.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That's all I have.
Trustee Pelkey?
Yes, first thing I have is, uh, can you give us an update on the poles on Chapman Street, have you heard anything more on what they're, on the removal?
Yeah, I did call them, actually I spoke, spoke to them a couple weeks ago, and they just said they get someone else to get a hold of me, they, they said they had, they had someone else get a hold of me for two things, the update to the network connection here from the internet, so we had more than three megabytes a second, and Chapman Street, that was a week or so ago, a week and a half ago, and I haven't heard anything back, 'cause I called them, they called me back and said they'd have someone else call me to both issues.
Yeah, because the residents are starting to ask again, you know, what's the status of the poles, so I told them to check on it, I mean, I contacted with them, I just like to keep, keep people informed on what's going on.
'Cause they're suppo, they're supposed to be doing fiber optic upgrades soon, that's when they want to, they said they're taking down, but they haven't given me a timeline on that either, it's kinda annoying, but...
Second thing is, um, have you heard anything back from the county about the two-way driveway that we want to put in here, are we just gonna stripe it or when the striping comes, can we make it a two-way?
I haven't heard back from them in over, in over a month.
Because you talked to Carl, Carl Weiss, the county engineer?
Adam Malone.
Oh, he's here.
No, oh, they sent, they sent me to a contact...
He's county.
Yeah, he's county.
They sent me to contact Adam Malone, 'cause it's a state road.
Because it's a state road.
Yeah.
But you had a meeting with them and they did...
Oh, yeah, we looked at it, he came over here, we looked at it, we measured it to see if it'd be wide enough for a two-way driveway, and it is wide enough for a two-way driveway.
Although we just striped it then.
Yeah.
He, he said we have to get a state permit first, so...
Why, why wouldn't we need a state permit just for a two-way driveway?
Parking, yeah.
Because it's a state road, so he wouldn't, other than saying, other than measuring and saying, yeah, legally wide enough, he won't do anything until there's a state permit.
It's not a new curb cut or anything, which obviously you have to get from DOT. No, it's just a striping and lettering, it's more of a safety concern because we wanna stop the people from going across the parking lot to the exit, this way you have two exits, so if they're coming from the back, they're not coming across, especially with the kids coming out of the rec center, coming out the fields, the playground, um, we just, this is...
And both are wide enough, right?
Yeah.
They seem to be wide enough.
We would keep that one as an exit, and this one here was proposed as an entrance and an exit.
Well, who proposed it, was the fire department proposing it?
Right, right, they brought it to our attention because of the ambulance.
For safety issues.
Get out here and, safety issues.
I think if we just taken, striped it, I, I, I can't see getting a permit for it.
Well, really, all, all we would have to do was take that one sign down, entrance only.
Entrance only, sign down, and when they're coming to stripe our roads because they're gonna pave, uh, Montgomery and they're putting a double yellow solid line with two white lines to, to try to slow the traffic down and keep the traffic closer to each other, so they will slow down, while they're here striping, it'd be the time to have them just come down through, we'll put a double stripe down through here, and, you know, we can make our own templates for arrows, you know, if they're easy enough to cut out of cardboard, we've done it before, we did it with the stops on the roads, we could cut out the templates and for the arrows and paint them yellow, the same color as the, you know, to show this is the way out, that's the way in, and they're very concerned that somebody's gonna get hit.
I share that concern.
Yeah, yeah, we all do, and, uh...
Let me see, yeah, well, I could, let me make a couple calls tomorrow and see if I can get some answers on that, I mean, I can try to reach out to Carl, talk to him, I can do it there periodically, um, yeah, just see if I can get some kind of answers that, it would seem to be kinda ridiculous, or, 'cause he, he can make the deal, but I don't know, yeah.
This is a diagram that you could have that the fire department gave to me, and that was just, it shows how it's a two-way, and of course the garden is still open.
Just keep that, keep that as an exit.
Yeah, I don't know if you want.
Sure.
You want that?
Yeah, great.
It gives you an idea of what we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, don't you, I get it, that makes sense. That makes sense. I mean, I mean, mostly the concern would be is it wide enough, that's the thing, I mean, I, and I think it is, I mean. Well, and if they said it's wide enough.
He already said it's wide enough.
Almost the same.
So if it's just applying for the permits, I, I think we should go forward and, and apply him for the permits.
Yeah, DOT's and that can be very slow unfortunately, but, but, but let me just find out.
Yeah, cause I sent them my, I sent the contact out by Malone area, I made an email and it took them a month to get back to me for that.
Yeah, unfortunately, it's been slow. You used to be able to deal with the local guy here and.
Right out of Plattsburgh.
Yeah, but now. Kind of really watered it down, yeah.
Or.
Yeah. It's a little more difficult.
Okay, the third thing I have is, when the sheriff took over our, our police station down here and they're using it as a satellite station, didn't they offer at one time to give us like an update on like a status report every quarter or something, you know, what's going on in our village?
How many calls there, we were getting this stuff?
Have we been getting that status report?
No.
Why? Why they haven't or?
Probably cause I didn't follow up.
It's, it seems like they had, they had a, a pretty good presence here when they started and it just seemed to be dwindling down a little bit. I mean, when they first came to the board, I remember I was a supervisor and they said that they're gonna have people walking the main street, checking the doors and stuff, and I haven't really seen any of that, I mean.
They have done that, cause I received a notification like all my offices.
On Lake Street, they put like, not all the time, they put like a little card that said, it's like their name and who checked in, it just says secure.
But. Every once in a while.
It's not all the time.
No, a little bit of the status report, I mean, our side streets, I mean, if you go down Montgomery Street, uh, the kids are playing on that little beach and the traffic is really whipping, I mean. I don't know where we are on those, on those radar signs.
Radar signs?
That we're talking about.
We haven't ordered them yet.
They're in the budget.
Yeah.
Maybe, I don't know where, where we're planning to pull them, but something should be done. I mean, the yellow caution lights down there helped for a little while, but now it seems like, we're hoping that the striping will slow things down. Cause they won't think it's a speedway, but it's gonna be new blacktop, so you know the way that is.
Pretty much, drive fast, new blacktop.
Yeah. Okay, but. On the Rabidou, Rabidou Way property that we surplus, I've been waiting for Tom and Tom to talk about this. And what we thought about doing was dividing it up and selling it to the property owners. Well, I talked to the assessor in Champlain and he did not recommend that. He recommends that we sell the lot as one whole lot and let them divide it. Cause that way we don't have to go to the zoning board of appeals and do a subdivision, if they wanna do that, it's all theirs. But the, the only thing that we would need to do is.
Except, except one person seemed to have some interest, is our car, right?
Both, both parties out there.
Okay.
They both have, so let them.
Yeah, they can buy it together if they want to and then they can split it up.
Right. Um, the only problem that we have to do is, when I talked to our son about this, is we have to get a fair market value on the property. So we have to get it appraised. So I called this Jerry Rosenbaum.
Yeah.
From Plattsburgh, he does appraisals.
Yes.
I, he didn't get back to me, but I did talk to.
So his son, his son Derek does too. Jerry is the father and Jerry's wife, Helene, they both do appraisals. I'm just, they're not really retired, I'm gonna say they're semi-retired. Their son Derek does them as well, he might be a little more accessible to do that. And there's a few other people we could, I could recommend as well, but.
It has to be a commercial appraisal, there's a lot of them just do residential, like the ones I called, they told me they only do residential, they don't do commercial properties.
And these guys, those guys do commercial.
They do commercial, so I was trying to get ahold of them, but I talked to the Matt from CDC and he was telling me that, you know, this could cost us up to two thousand dollars. And, you know, we don't have that budgeted and I wanted to talk to our son about it, but, I mean, before we go ahead and, I mean, we're gonna make the money back when we sell the property.
Right, well, yeah, it's gonna.
It's the point, do we have the two thousand forward, you know, if we're watching our money?
Yeah, I'd be surprised if it caused that, I mean, I mean, I can't, you, you're not, you're not wrong that a commercial appraisal could cost at least that much. Um, but when you're talking about a vacant piece of property, I'd be surprised if it caused that. I mean, I, I can't speak for the Rosenbombs, but.
So what is the son's name?
Derek.
Derek?
Yeah. Yeah. And if, if you talk to him, Brian, just you wanna mention my name, say eight of her names, maybe I should get ahold of you, you know, blah, 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 that's, that's all good. I, I know him pretty well, I've used him on a lot of zoning projects that I've involved in, like in town or in the city. And he, he's a good guy. Probably a little more accessible than his dad.
Okay.
Yeah, a little more available, I should say, maybe than his dad might be. His dad, his dad's a great appraiser, he told us his mom, but.
The only thing is we would wanna keep that right-of-way through there for our utilities, the roadway. And that's something that you would probably do when we.
Yeah, but when it's, when it's gonna be conveyed out, we would just reserve that, reserve the right-of-way in the deed when we convey it to wherever the buyers are, or buyer, that's the case maybe.
So that's our next step, is to get, to get a price on the appraisal.
Right, cause you're gonna put it out like for bid, you, you know, one of the requirements has gotta be fair market value.
Fair market value. We can't, we can't just go off the appraisal, off the, off the county appraisal, that's what.
Yeah, not really, well, county assessment.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, because, I mean, assessments are really, especially right now, are way off.
Yeah.
So appraisal really gives you the best, the fair market value, so. But yeah, use my name, talk to Derek, that's fine, he'll do a good job. If you ask my house of charge, they'll tell you, I mean, it's vacant land, I can't believe it's gonna be two grand, that seems a lot.
Okay. Well, Matt said up to two grand, I haven't seen it, so.
With, with buildings and stuff, where you've got, you've got to deal with square footage and other amenities and things? Absolutely. For raw land, I, I don't think so.
How does the board feel about that?
Yeah. Good.
See if we can get an estimate and.
Yeah. Top percent.
Are you going forward, I mean, you still want?
Oh yeah, definitely.
The property to surplus, so.
Yeah, it's gonna put it back on the tax.
They said put it on the tax roll. We don't want to maintain it anymore.
Yeah, if, the only thing I mentioned to you, Brian, if we're gonna put it out for bid, we should mention in whatever bid or how we're gonna advertise it, that it's gonna be subject to whatever right-of-way the village is gonna retain through it.
Right, right. It's a, I think it was a forty-seven foot road frontage all the way to the back.
Yeah. Just to so they're aware of it, I mean.
Okay, the last thing I have is I need an executive session for a particular employee.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
That everything?
That's all I have.
Trusty Rodriguez?
Um, is there a way we can get a list, if you care, with Adam or somebody, of what road, roads are like up next for paving? I've had people ask me and I just didn't know I could get a list, so I can help answer some questions.
This year is Montgomery.
That's, that's just the one?
Yeah. Yeah, that's all we had, enough for a budget.
I think next year is, what's that road south of town?
Smith Street?
Smith Street.
Yeah, that was the one that Karen asked me about, so.
Yeah, next year.
Is that right? Smith Street, I think was supposed to be this year, Montgomery Street was supposed to be last year, but COVID and state providing all the CHIPS funding kinda put a kibosh to that.
Where are you buying?
All right, that's it.
On the bright side of that though, they are increasing CHIPS funding.
I've got just two little things down here. Uh, we've got two new businesses in the village. One on Pratt Street is an ice cream and hot dog and hamburgers, I guess. And the other one's a drink, uh, some type of a hour drink or something, I guess, or whatever. On Lake Street. Which I like to, cause the people hope they stay in business and people in the village help them out.
Yeah, help the village, fortunately.
And the drip shop has that nice garage bay, they open the door and you can sit inside.
Yeah. That's all I have.
Any other reports?
Yes, I, um, I spoke with Rich Holcomb, the deputy commissioner at the Department of Social Services. I had called his, um, office about the issues we were having with the anchorage. And he got back to me and said that, you know, the anchorage is not their first choice for placing people because the transportation is difficult. So there's generally not, um, a lot of people at social services placing there. But he did tell me that, um, only the person listed on their application is allowed to stay in the room. Whether they have dogs or not is up to the owner of the hotel. There's no drugs or alcohol allowed in their rooms. Um, and they don't place sex offenders there because it's too close to school. They did do a sweep in the anchorage, they had the people from social services come and go into every room that was a room of a person they had placed at social services and they searched for drug and alcohol. They didn't find any drugs or alcohol in any of the rooms there when they came up. Um, but we discussed, you know, maybe that's why they're sitting outside with their boombox and their beer, having their parties is cause they're drinking outside and not bringing it into their room. And he said that if we have any complaints, certainly, you know, if it's loud or what have you, he recommends that people call the police and make a complaint and have the police come by. And if we could get that police report then, and it might be the only way we know they called the police, is if we can get a police report, it's on the anchorage. Um, if they have a name or a room number of someone they spoke with, then I could get that information back to Rich Holcomb and he can follow up on that. Um, if they could get some idea, and he said, you know, if the people who see this or complain about this, hear a name or can see what room number they're, I don't think they can actually see, you know, it's the street behind the anchorage, I don't think they can see what room number they're hanging around in front of or what have you. But if they do call the police and I can get him a name and note or room number, he will follow up on it.
Did he say if he's still sending people up here?
They do, yes, um, but only if they don't have room in their places in Plattsburgh. And he said their numbers are coming down, so the number of people in the anchorage should be coming down. And again, it's not their first choice because of the transportation issue. But I don't know exactly how many right now are in the anchorage, he said he would look into that and get back to me.
I spoke to one of the sheriff and he said he thought that they, they limited sending people up here, so. Maybe they are slowing down or whatever, like you said.
Does the bus line either run?
There is a bus that runs in the village. Uh, there's, there's one in the morning that heads towards Plattsburgh and there's one in the afternoon that comes back.
High transit, yeah.
And it doesn't always come straight back.
No, it's spin, it's spin phone, it picks up, I know it does, I've seen it just about every night at Dollar.
Dollar General.
Dollar General.
They're there early in the morning too.
Yeah, so I think they pick up and drop off in the evening.
You'll see people walk in the anchorage down the road towards the anchorage.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's all I have.
Anything for you, Cooper? Cause I see, I got this, a report on permits.
That's your month, every six months, I put that out and I put it in you guys' box just so you have an idea of what we're doing. Uh, but of course, that doesn't reflect, uh, a lot of stuff that we do, which of course doesn't go into our computer. As you will, there's always something going on here. But it's pretty, actually been pretty busy. But you know, last year, uh, we had a lot more permits because we, we worked with errors in the first part of the season and we did about twenty permits through errors. But this, that, and the other thing. So, but we're still, we're doing, I think about forty there this time. So if that holds up, it'll be eighty for the year, that's quite a bit of permits for a village just size.
Maybe if the price of lumber comes down a little bit.
Well, you know, I, you know, I spoke to so many guys who would like to do a, maybe just build a garage or a project of different sizes and they price things down, they say, well, we may hold off till next year, so, but.
Yeah, I think a lot of people.
Cause lumber's worth its weight in gold right now, it seems like. Okay. Back to the public.
George Walker, quick question. I'm wondering if, um, the board could ask community services to do a compliance check once a month or more regularly, I mean, we know there are issues there. Those folks have the ability to enter rooms at any time without a warrant. I think you might find out what's going on rather than once in ten years. And I think that would probably, through the administrator with the board's support, um, maybe ask.
Yeah, can we ask him if he can come up?
Yeah.
Once a month or once every other week or something like that, just to check on these people?
I'll do that.
Because, I mean, like you said, yeah, if they don't check on them and they're only waiting for complaints, they're not gonna check on them.
Like more towards the weekend, it seems like there's like a lot of complaints on the weekends. I've seen it coming home from work early in the morning or going to work at night, there's cops right at the anchorage, Friday, Saturday night.
And that's another reason we need to get that report from the sheriff.
Usually it's the state police sheriff, is that the?
Sheriff or state?
Yeah. Yeah, the sheriff I talked to, he said, they're there for adoption also.
Oh, I bet. It'll always depend who gets called. Yeah, somebody calls the state police or they show up, um, not the sheriff or the sheriff.
I'll call and see if we can find out how many calls they've had to the anchorage, you know, in the past, whatever, say, three months or so. Then I would have that information, I can talk to social services and say, you know, this is the level of police involvement we have, perhaps you can go more often.
Cause even if it's, if it's the state police show, showing up and I get regular reports from the sheriff, so not gonna reflect state police activity necessarily.
I know, I could ask the state police and the sheriff, oh.
Yeah, you can call them, they'll be willing to give that information out.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the public? Make the motion, we go into recess.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.